I love the smell of night hum in the morning.
And now, live, unedited, unrehearsed, and unapologetic, brought to you by Imperial Fire Alarm and Security, securing your world. Straight off the ledge, it's J.D. and Smitty!
Good morning. This is The Ledge Radio Show with J.D. and Smitty on 96 K-Rock. Phone numbers to call in are 277 or 775-9600. We are streaming live, high-def video on theledgeradioshow.com. Check us out on Facebook, facebook.com/TheLedgeRadioShow. I'd like to start out this morning just to thank our sponsors real quick. D-Square Construction, Summer Jade Boat Detailing, Terry Winter Auto Service Center, Health and Harmony Center, Mel's Diner, Matt Miller Tractor, and especially Imperial Fire Alarm and Security.
Securing your world.
Smitty, you awake, I guess, huh?
Yeah, weren't you gonna welcome me in here? Geez.
I didn't know if you were still on bended knee.
I'm gonna tell everybody, get up. Get up, you slackers. Get ready, because here comes the ledge.
I thought you were over there worshiping the altar of Barack Obama.
I'm worshiping the altar of Frank Mann. He's to my right, thank you very much.
Yes, this morning, we do have Lee County Commissioner Frank Mann live in studio. Frank is the county commissioner for District Five. Welcome, Mr. Mann.
J.D. and Smitty and Frank this morning. Great to be with you guys.
Well, we're glad to have you. Glad you can make it in. And if you don't mind, Frank, let us know, geographically, what is District Five?
Essentially, it's the eastern part of the county, actually from where we're broadcasting here this morning, near Estero. My district includes most of Estero, and then goes north and encompasses all of Lehigh Acres, and then cross the river and all of Alva.
Okay.
But now, bear in mind that all commissioners in Lee County run countywide. We have to live in the district that we represent, but we are elected by everybody.
Okay. So at the election, I mean, is it every election cycle we'll see each commissioner up for election, or does it kind of, you know, every other?
Three will be up this year, two will be up rotating in the off-year. It's a four-year term, so every two years, some commissioner is up.
Now, speaking of that, there's a group out there that's, looks like they're trying to get some extra Lee County Commission seats. There's been something in the press lately where they're looking at going to seven commissioners, five of which have to each live in their district, and then two would essentially be floaters.
That's what, yeah, "at-large" is what they call those guys, the ones that run "at-large" throughout the county.
Well, and it's really amazing the way they kind of got the setup. You've actually got a group of Republicans, Democrats, Libertarians, and even the NAACP that are petitioning this. Do you know the backstory as to why? What's the interest here?
There's a good argument can be made, actually, for or against what we call "single-member" districts. What you're proposing is a combination of single-member districts, and "at-large", two commissioners would run countywide, like we all do now, but five would have to live and run in the district they represent. And there's been, the argument there is that somebody that lives in that district and runs only in that district would be more responsive to that district and more sensitive to the issues confronting that district. Also, if you don't have to run in a county of 600,000 people, which we are in fact larger than that now, it would be easier for some person to get elected than having to run against an incumbent who's already got a name identification. It's easier for him to raise campaign funds. If you had to run in a smaller area, you might still be able to go door-to-door and do the old-fashioned politic and connect with the people easier. The argument on the other side is that if somebody has an issue, for instance, in Lehigh, and J.D., that's where you live,
That's right. I live in Lehigh.
And you really need three votes on the commissioner, or a majority of the votes to get something accomplished for Lehigh. If your commissioner from Lehigh lives there and he's the only one you can vote for, how are you gonna get the commissioner from Cape Coral to care about you, or from South County, Estero or Bonita area, to care about you when they don't have to run there?
You know, that's a good point. And folks, you know, just so you know, this is Lee County Commissioner Frank Mann in studio with us live today. Telephone numbers are 277 or 775-9600 if you've got any questions for the commissioner. And, you know, speaking of that, you know, trying to get your commissioner, you know, you've only got your one in your district, you know, Lehigh, they've been trying to incorporate for many years. You know, and what's your stance on the incorporation aspect of it?
I think someday, Lehigh will. I mean, it's almost certain that they will. I believe they're the largest area in Florida today, which is where there's a compact community that is in fact not incorporated. And there are some things in terms of trying to control your own destiny that simply is best done by a government agency close to you. And, I mean, we've all heard about, the best government is the closest government, your local government. There's been a reluctance. It only failed by two or three percentage points
It was real close.
Five, six years ago.
Yeah, real close.
That's the first time it's been on the ballot for some time. They've talked about it forever. And I predict someday, and probably not the too distant future, that you'll see Lehigh.
Well, I mean, I think it's a valid concern of the Lehigh residents, the ones that are for it. I mean, you know, they always, they tend to feel like they're the redheaded stepchild of the county, you know, because, I mean, we do have to use, you know, the sheriff services. Now, Lehigh does have their own EMS transport, but I don't know how successful that's been over the years. Typically, EMS, you know, is not a moneymaker. You know, a lot of times you have to transport folks that can't pay.
It's a money loser.
Well, there you go. So, you know, but, you know, you've got a few cities that have had some good models, like Bonita Springs, I think they're doing pretty well, you know, but they've got a different, not just a demographic, but they've got a different tax infrastructure as well with all the business that Bonita Springs brings. And that's one area that Lehigh has seemed to lack for forever. I mean, when I first moved there in '91, it was just a sleepy little residential town. There was almost zero business all the way, you know, down Lee Boulevard coming into town. We do have some there now. I mean, you know, what do you see to, you know, to continue that trend?
Lehigh's greatest challenge is the fact that it was established back when we had no rules for what you had to do when you built a subdivision. So it was built with nearly, like, 350,000 single-family residential lots, but there was no provision made for schools, for fire stations, for commercial zoning, for industrial zoning, all the things that a successful, functioning community has. So nowadays, our challenge is to try to superimpose those critically important pieces of infrastructure over an existing set of zoning rules that allow for those 350,000 single-family dwellings, but have not left enough room to do the other kind of thing.
So the zoning rules now are really antiquated?
Antiquated, and that's because, and this is not unlike Cape Coral, they're struggling with the same thing. Golden Gate subdivisions all over Florida that were established 50 years ago, and I remember them. I mean, I was in college at the time, but we had no requirements for what a community would look like. When the developers coming in here buying land for next to nothing, truly, really, next to nothing, $50, $80 an acre, all they do is scratch a handful of canals through them and run a bunch of roads with about a quarter of inch of asphalt on top of them. And they call it a commune, and they start selling lots all around the country, in Europe, $10 now, $10 a month. So we haven't overcome the mistakes. We didn't say, I mean, water became a tremendous issue. In Cape Coral, we cut 300 miles of canals over there, which the first thing they did, it gave access to the Gulf of Mexico, and people loved that, and it was a great sales marketing tool, but it also brought billions of gallons of saltwater into downtown Cape Coral, and most all of your freshwater wells that they used to supply their residences, residences, became saltwater intrusion, and you can't use them, you can't, I mean, water has become, and still is, a huge issue in the Cape. Those are mistakes that, thank goodness, the legislature finally addressed, and you can't do that anymore. But to fix the old ones is time-consuming. It takes years. Some of the things you can never fix totally, and it's very expensive. And that's but why some of the folks in Lehigh are saying, "Wait a minute, I don't know if I want to be a city. Can I afford to be a city?" Because there'll be somebody wanting to bring all these improvements.
Can't keep everybody happy.
Amen to that.
This is The Ledge Radio Show with J.D. and Smitty on 96 K-Rock. You can call in if you've got any questions for Commissioner Frank Mann, who's live in studio. Phone numbers are 277 or 775-9600. And Smitty, you got anything for the commissioner this morning?
Just was looking at some of the stuff that Sonny was talking about. He was on the show a couple of weeks ago.
Now, and Sonny's running against Mr. Mann this election cycle.
Right. And so I just want him to address the bond issue with the Red Sox Stadium. They were saying that originally it was touted as, "Oh, it's all paid for," and in fact, it really was not. So, I mean, it just seems to me like the usual business where, you know, the average guy gets told one thing, sold a bill of goods, and then he signs on, and now all of a sudden, "Oh, well, oh, yeah, we did get all this," you know.
Where'd the money come from, Smitty?
Stimulus. That's what Sonny, that's what Sonny.
From Obama?
Yeah, and don't get me wrong, if you use correctly, I don't have any problem with it. I kind of like baseball myself, so.
Well, it was kind of confusing. I listened to the show that, when Sonny was on, and he talked about stimulus money being used for the stadium. I can assure you that there was no stimulus money used to build that $75, $78 million stadium. I forget what the last pennies came out to, but...
What was the stimulus money used for?
There is, there was federal money that was part of a program that's been in effect for years, I don't know, 40, 50 years, that had to do with economic development stimulus, but it's been used interchangeably with some of the present Obama administration stimulus programs, which were a number of them. But this economic development dollars that we did pull down was only a modest subsidy on the interest rate that we pay on the bonds that were issued to build the facility with. Instead of paying like 4.1%, we're paying like 3.5%, and that's the advantage we're getting. But you need to include in this discussion the fact that we are using tourist tax dollars only to pay off the bonds on this, on the $78 million, and that'll be over the next 25 years. But only tourists, when they stay in a motel here or buy food at a restaurant, are gonna be paying that tax. Tourists only. Our local citizens aren't paying a penny.
Well, I got a question when it comes to that, then. If the tourists pay it through taxation at a local restaurant, like you mentioned, how does the restaurateur know
Yeah, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have included the restaurant. Back restaurants out, it's much easier to stand. There's a little bit of a...
The bed tax?
Yeah, it's a bed tax, but it gives, there's a little spillover when you're in a restaurant, which is in a hotel or a motel. You'll pick up some there.
It's tricky, tricky, man.
Now, what, you know, something else that Sonny brought up, too, was the casinos, you know, the idea of the casinos, and there was a big, you know, big, you know, big things coming down the pike. We're looking at maybe getting a casino resort type of facility at the Forum off of Colonial on the way into Lehigh, and, you know, it seems like there's some pros and cons to that.
Because I know I was for it, and Sonny, I don't believe, I believe.
Sonny's for it also.
I listened to the show, and I wasn't real sure whether he was for it or against it, but he was saying, in essence, it sounded like he was saying it's gonna be the great saving grace and would get us out of all the doldrums here. The first thing our listeners need to understand is that the Lee County Commission has no say whatsoever, none, no role.
That's hard to believe.
In whether or not you're gonna have a casino here. That is totally in the hands of the Florida Legislature. And until they approve it, and that's what the proposal was last year, in the most recently completed, just a month ago, legislative session, there was a group from Miami and the Fort Lauderdale area that wanted to get a special exemption or approval to put on the ballot there and only there, the ability to have casinos over there.
Are you for it or against it, Frank?
I think it's a serious mistake for us, and it is not the catch-all, save-all.
But you can't deny that's gonna bring in tons and tons of money.
And jobs.
It's gonna bring in tons and tons of money.
How do you tell the people that need the money?
The money goes to the casino owners. Now, hear me out on this, because it's critically important, because it has been offered as what I would call a simple solution to a very complex economic problem. And I'll go immediately to Las Vegas, Nevada, as an example, and I can also use Atlantic City, New Jersey. Lee County, Florida, because of its dependence on the construction industry, when the crash hit, we were the worst unemployment location geographically in the United States of America, right here.
Yeah, because all of us were in construction.
Nearly 12%, and it was all related to construction. And now we're being told that the way we get out of that and get back to normal is that having a big giant casino out here is gonna stimulate the economy and create all those jobs that were disappeared and disappeared during construction. The worst, the only place in the United States of America, I wish we were on television, because my hands keep...
You are. You're actually, you're streaming live on the Ledge camera.
I see you comb your hair this morning. Very nice.
I get all emotional here. The monsters.
Don't start crying like Boehner.
The only place worse than Lee County for unemployment, the only place in the whole world, in the United States of America, I'm sorry, was Las Vegas, Nevada. There are more casinos in Las Vegas than in all the rest of the United States combined, and it had the worst unemployment rate of any place. So don't tell me, with an absence of looking at Las Vegas, that this is the cure-all. And you can take it right now back to New Jersey, Atlantic City, New Jersey. I was there 25 years ago.
Speak on it, Frank. Speak on it, brother.
When they said, "Okay, we're gonna save Atlantic City, and all the slums are gonna go away." So they built all these casinos right there, some of which are bankrupt today, and the same slums are adjacent to those casinos that were there 25 years ago. So I'm just saying, look at the big picture here, and don't look for a simple solution to a complex problem before you vote. And again, Lee County does not have an opportunity to vote and will not until the legislature passes it. And this year, the House of Representatives virtually took it up and one committee killed it.
Yeah, it's off the legislature.
And no one was thinking that the thing to do to save Florida is to have it from wall-to-wall casinos.
Well, and I don't think that was the implication at the time, and I didn't get that from, you know, in listening to Sonny, that he thought that would be the end-all, you know, to fix all the problems. I think it was just one of these deals where, hey, we can build a large facility, we can employ 4,000, you know, 4,000 people, you know, during the construction afterwards for the workers in the casino.
The money's so good, it's hard not to bite on that. I mean, just face it, when you look at that kind of income.
And it wasn't gonna be built with tax dollars, you know, that was gonna be funded by the casino. And I mean, so, what are the negatives to it in your mind?
In my mind, it will change forever the quality of life of Lee County, Florida, and Southwest Florida in general. We have, you know, the reason we are the fastest-growing area in the United States of America and have been for most of the last 25 years, quarter of a century, is because of all the natural assets and natural qualities that we have, none the least of which are the beaches, the Gulf of Mexico, the Cluj-Hatchee River. We've got 100 golf courses down here. We've got the perfect weather, I mean, as good as you can get, and if you're not in Hawaii, right here. And we have been the fastest-growing area because of the quality of life and the good things we got here. Now, if you're gonna turn this into a gambling casino, you are changing forever the quality of life and what everything that Lee County stands for and is all about. And I'm, look, I've sat around plenty of poker tables and wasted my money. It's not, it's not that issue alone, but this'll be a change in the quality of our life that I don't want to leave for my grandkids.
I hear you. Just a real quick question before we take a break. I guess you don't believe in term limits. You've been in for 35 years, so I'm assuming you don't believe in term limits.
I believe in giving the citizens a right to vote on whether or not we have term limits.
Okay, so you're for voting for term limits, and looking at your 35 career, 35 years, and what would you change? What would you change, looking back at everything?
Smitty, why don't we hit that after the break? I'm gonna, we'll bring Mr. Frank Mann back for just a short while after the break.
Letting him off easy, okay.
This is The Ledge Radio Show, 96 K-Rock.
If you're a boat enthusiast, then you know just how much fun boating can be. Whether you're fishing or golf, or just taking in the beautiful sights that can only be seen from a boat, there's nothing quite like it. Boat owners also know that it takes time to maintain that boat. So when it comes to cleaning, detailing, and restoration, Summer Jade is on board for you. Summer Jade specializes in full-service detailing. They also offer teak restoration, underwater hull cleaning, and hull painting. It doesn't matter if you have a small boat or a large yacht, they do the job with quality results. Summer Jade is family-owned and operated, serving Lee County and the surrounding areas. And best of all, their rates can't be beat. Call today and ask for Eric. He has some great promotional rates, some as low as $11 per foot.
I'm Eric Naylor, the owner of Summer Jade. Our rates are unbeatable. Call me at 239-878-6947. That's 878-6947. In Florida, it's summer every day.
And the boating is easy.
When it comes to finding a reliable general contractor, you need to pick someone with a solid background and a good reputation. D-Squared Construction gives you all that and more. They are family-owned and operated, and stand behind every project. Quality workmanship and satisfaction to the customer has made them one of the premier contractors in Southwest Florida since 2004. Small residential renovations to large commercial projects, they do it all, and they do it all well. Your projects are much too important to trust just anyone. D-Squared Construction will come to your house or commercial project and give you a free onsite estimate. Call Kevin Dwyer at 239-561-4108. That's 239-561-4108 for a free consultation and some good, sound advice. They won't waste your time or your money. D-Squared Construction, when it needs to get done, right.
Hey there, Sarah. You better wipe that smile off your face. People will wonder what you've been doing.
If they only knew my secret.
Well, tell me what your secret is. I love a good secret.
Well, my husband surprised me yesterday by taking me to the Health and Harmony Center. I got a full-body Swedish massage and picked up a few other items just for me.
Wow, that sounds awesome.
It was better than awesome. It was the most relaxing one hour that I've experienced in a long, long time, and well overdue. At the Health and Harmony Center, they offer massage, yoga, acupuncture, natural medicines, fitness classes, workshops, and more. I can't wait to go back. It was certainly better than a card and flowers.
Call the Health and Harmony Center now for more details, and ask about their one-hour Swedish massage special for only $65, now through April the 14th. Put a smile on someone's face. Call 239-433-5995. That's 239-433-5995. Or stop by at 15951 McGregor Avenue.
This country sure has hell been going down the drain. I love the smell of night hum in the morning.
And now, live, unedited, unrehearsed, and unapologetic, brought to you by Imperial Fire Alarm and Security, securing your world. Straight off the ledge, it's J.D. and Smitty!
And we're back here on The Ledge Radio Show with J.D. and Smitty on 96 K-Rock. Phone numbers are 277 or 775-9600. You can check out the live stream on the web at theledgeradioshow.com, or check us out on Facebook, too, facebook.com/theledgeradioshow. And in studio with us this morning is Lee County Commissioner Frank Mann, serving the District Five. And Smitty, I believe you had a question for Mr. Mann before we went to break?
Yeah, we're gonna keep him around for just a little bit longer, and then we're gonna cut you loose, Mr. Frank Mann. We know you're busy.
Give me your toughest stuff, Smitty. I'm ready for you.
I don't think you are. Well, I did ask you about the term limits, and you did say that you were for voting for a term limit, but you didn't say where you were. Would you support, would you vote for it or not?
I think it's a good idea, yes.
Okay. It's a good idea. That's pretty good, because you're 35 years. I guess you're ready to retire now.
Well, remember, Smitty, now, he hasn't been in the Lee County Commission for 35 years.
No, he's in politics 35 years.
Well, I was...
Term limits are based on a specific position.
You know, Sonny called you pork and beans. Did you know that?
I heard that. I'm not sure what that means, but being old Southern boy, I took that as a compliment.
Hey, Smitty, we've got a caller on the line. Caller, you're on The Ledge Radio Show with J.D. and Smitty. What you got?
Hi, this is Jonah. I live in Lehigh.
Hi, Jonah.
I'd like to know why you're against widening 82 leading into Lehigh.
Is this for Commissioner Mann?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Mann, are you against widening 82?
You know, it's funny how these things get started.
Thanks, Jonah.
I have absolutely no clue where she would come up with such a suggestion, because 82 right now is being widened all the way into the city of Fort Myers. That's one of the major projects we got going on here right now. It's a joint project being paid for by the county, by the city of Fort Myers, and by the state of Florida.
And that road needed to be widened 10 years ago.
It desperately needed it. It has, everything has begun there since I've been serving Lehigh. It's one of the most desperately needed improvements in all of Lee County, and it's underway right now. Now, if you want to go from 82 on to Amokale, I'm for it, I'm certainly for it, but that is a state road, and it's not the county's obligation to fund that. The price tag on that is a half-billion dollars.
Wow.
At a time when the recession has really affected our revenues, and the gasoline tax, which we use to pay for roads at 12 cents a gallon every time you fill up, is, since we're looking at $4 gas, people are buying less gallons, and that means our revenue is limited even more so. So, no, I'm totally supportive. I mean, 82 was a killer highway. 80 was before that. But in addition to 82, we're also widening Colonial, and those two projects, which are gonna be done in about six months, serve mostly Lehigh Acres. 80% of all the traffic on that Colonial extension and the 82 coming out of Fort Myers, 80% of that traffic goes and comes to Lehigh Acres. So Lehigh is the prime beneficiary of most of what we're doing in road construction today in Lee County.
You know, I've got a question about that now. You know, we had the I-75 was widened, and we had I-Rocks do the I-75 widening, and that was the fastest, the fastest road project on an interstate I've ever seen in my life.
They should put those guys on 41, because I tell you, that thing's been going on for like 20 years. It's ridiculous.
This thing right in front of the station here.
Oh, my God.
This road is terrible.
Oh, my God.
And I don't know how we select who does what. I'm guessing it's...
Low bid, low bid.
Low bid, that's the law.
You know, they should change that law, because I know in Europe, they have what they call Olympic bidding, and they take the low guy out, and they throw him out, and they take the high guy and throw him out. That way, you know, you're not gonna get, you know, you're not gonna, yeah, you're not gonna get Chinese drywall in your house because he's low bid. And that's been an issue, and we've talked about it for years, that people with low bid get in, and then you get what you get for low bid. And I think it's something to look at.
Hey, Smitty, we got a caller on the line. Caller, you're on The Ledge with J.D. and Smitty. Go.
Morning, guys. I don't know if you guys talked about it yet, but how about all this blue-green algae out there in Alva? And I don't think anybody wants to say it, but all the chemicals being dumped by Yoder Brothers. And I don't think anybody is doing anything with it, because somebody's getting greased on the back door or something.
Commissioner Mann, you got something for the caller? Thanks, caller.
I live in Alva, on the river, so there's nobody more sensitive to when blue-green algae shows up there, and you start seeing the little critters floating up to the surface. We have an ongoing battle with the South Florida Water Management District and the United States Army Corps of Engineers, who control the releases from Lake Okeechobee.
He's talking about somebody dumping its stuff there, and...
Well...
It's probably, I assume it's runoff.
Yeah, but he's standing there, some palms getting greased over there, you know? Turned ahead the other way, good old boy thing.
It's easy to make those accusations, but I can tell you, and I'm not trying to defend Yoder Brothers, and they're not called Yoder Brothers anymore, but it's a farming operation that grows flowers that have been there for 50 years at least.
Yeah, I remember.
They've been inspected over and over, and they are permitted to do what they're doing, and they've got all kinds of retention ponds there now. There's so many reasons that the river becomes polluted from time to time, but when the Lord was in charge of it, before we improved it by the United States Corps of Engineers, straightening it up.
They're geniuses.
Then we had all kinds of freshwater running into it, from little rivers and creeks from here way on up to almost Okeechobee. The river didn't use to connect Okeechobee, but it got within about three miles of it. But with all that natural filtration and with the rain, and the water, the river would flush. It doesn't flush anymore. We've got three locks in it between here and Lake Okeechobee, and it's all controlled by man today. And we compete for those water uses with the agricultural industry, with the commercial fishing industry, with, I mean, there's a half a dozen different interest groups, recreational boating, that sort of thing.
So is Lee County then... So is Lee County then actively pursuing, you know, this issue with swift mud?
It's something they call soft mud. It's the South Florida Water Management District. It is a top priority of ours. We spend literally hundreds of thousands of dollars a year to have our engineering studies and scientific studies. The city of Sanibel has been very active this, as has Fort Myers and Cape Coral and Fort Myers Beach, because the same blue-green algae ends up in the Gulf of Mexico.
Killing the fish out there.
And that's our estuaries. That's where our little baby fish are made, for goodness sakes. So there's no one more sensitive than this in any public office than myself, being both a native here who grew up swimming and catching fish when you used to be able to catch, I mean, they were crazy, and now living there and smelling that water when the blue-green algae breaks out. We are right now in a fight to get them to release the water. And now they're telling us again, well, the lake is down to twelve feet or so and so we're not going to be able to give you any water.
So you gotta wait for the rains to come to fill it up?
Well, tell that to all the little fish and the crustaceans out there that are croaking right now and floating to the top, so.
Maybe they're croaking because of the oil spill.
The caller is right on target that this is a major issue. Freshwater, clean water is critically important to our environment and our environment is critically important to the economy here.
Sure.
One does not work without the other.
So looking back at your career, I asked you that before we went on break.
I wasn't thirty-five years in public office, that's sadly. I served twelve years.
Since nineteen seventy-four, right?
I served in the legislature for twelve years. What Sonny may have forgotten when he was here before was that I was out of office for twenty years. And six years ago, I went back in office.
Man, you're a glutton for punishment.
It's been, it's been an honor. I was bored sitting out there just watching the fish.
Just fishing, huh?
Well, I understand that. And, you know, and we were talking before we came on this morning and, you know, you're a Florida native, just like myself. Your parents, you know, they came here when they were real young. Have you always been a Republican?
Oh, no, no, no. The one thing that Ronald Reagan and Connie Mack III, that's our congressman's father, who was in the United States Senate.
Yep.
Ronald Reagan, Connie Mack III and Frank Mann, one thing we all have in common, we were all formerly Democrats. And around here, when I grew up, when I was twenty-one, you only registered Democrat. I mean, we didn't know what Republicans were.
Well, but, you know, in the old days though, the Democrat Party was a lot different than it is today.
Oh, we were more conservative than you can imagine.
It's almost like the tides have flip-flopped, you know? Now, you know, the old Democrat Party, you know, acts like, you know, or the Republican Party, they act like the old Democrat Party did way back when. It's like things have flip-flopped, you know? It's a total, and I don't mean to say that you flip-flop, you know, your positions, but, you know, it's different. My parents were raised Southern Democrat and that's how they were, you know, forever until they saw the light.
Yeah.
Let's take a quick call.
Yep.
All right, caller, you're on The Ledge Radio Show with J D and Smitty.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Frank, this is Alan in Benita. How you doing?
Hey Alan, good morning. Good to have you up so early.
Thank you. I appreciate your position on the casinos because for one thing, I believe that it's something that we voted on several times in the state and have turned it down, that we should have casino gambling in Florida. So I appreciate that. Another thing is here in Benita, we kind of had the same kind of thing to where they were wanting to do the, build the be-all, end-all condo situation with Imperial Landings on Old Forty-One. And a lot of things have happened to where we've had too much development over the years. And I kind of think in some ways, what's happened over the last few years has been a healthy correction to the industry. And it's too bad, but I've been here for fifty-two years and I've seen things come and go and we always come back. I wanted to get your opinion on historic preservation. We're working on a situation now where we would like to see about getting a demolition delay ordinance. So when things happen, people can't just tear down a property that's of historic significance.
Alan, let me interrupt you here because we're a little short on time, but I hear what you're saying. And first, I'm sure you have probably taken this up with folks at the Benita Springs City Council, if it's within their boundaries, jurisdictional boundaries. You want to make certain they've heard your interest and I'm sure you have. We have a historic preservation committee at the county and you can call my office and we'll put you in touch with those folks to single out any single project that you want us to follow up on. But we're big on historic preservation and it's critically important here because with the rapid growth we've had, we have lost some historic parcels and some buildings and that's too bad and we try to be on top of that. So Alan, I'm with you all the way. Appreciate your call.
This is The Ledge Radio Show with J D and Smitty. And this morning we have County Commissioner Frank Mann in studio for just a few more moments. Phone numbers to call in are two seven seven or seven seven five ninety-six hundred. And Commissioner Mann, I got a question for you. It's a local question for Lehigh. It was something that came up just the other day, just a few days ago, something about the roundabout that they were looking at putting in on Beth Stacey and there was a local hearing in the community.
Yeah, I was there.
Yeah, and it, you know, it looked like it was going to cost somewhere around five-hundred-thousand dollars, they were first talking to put this roundabout in. And I'll tell you, you know, for me, I'm not real comfortable with these roundabouts. You know, it's like, it's like you're putting in, you know, a situation.
A circle, okay.
It is a circle. It's like, but it's like a sport.
It's not complicated.
It's merging as a sport. I can merge fine, but if you've ever seen anybody try to merge on I-75, they treat it like a sport.
We don't do it.
Operator error, I think.
You know, we're gonna put people out there that don't remember what a yield sign looks like and they're gonna try to figure this out. But, you know, the biggest thing for me was the price. I mean, here we got, it seems really expensive to me and where I'd really, if we have to spend that money, I'd rather spend it on something like putting irrigation pumps in the medians or for the medians going into Lehigh. Because I don't know if you've ever come into town and you've noticed that water truck, they have to hire somebody in a water truck to water the medians and he takes up the whole left lane. And as you're coming around these blind corners, the guy's right there doing three miles an hour. I don't know how many times I've seen people lock up their brakes or run off the road trying to miss this guy. Why did they not pre-plan to put irrigation pumps in for the sprinklers in the middle of the median?
J D, when we first started this program, I was talking about the lack of planning for places like Lehigh and Cape Coral and how expensive it is now to superimpose all of that on existing infrastructure and highways. It's horribly expensive. One of the cost factors in the roundabout they're talking about is in fact, a water system so that it wouldn't be a barren, ugly-looking thing. But that's only a portion of it. But compare this, it costs you about two fifty to three hundred thousand to put a stoplight. And I don't know which direction this one's going to go right now. That's why we had the hearing to get the public input on it. But when a hurricane comes and this traffic light goes out, if you don't have a cop there, you have a disaster. One of the advantage of.
Should be out in a hurricane, I don't think.
Well, right after or the next three weeks before your power comes back on, you never need power at a roundabout. It always functions.
Right, that is true.
No matter what the weather is. They work splendidly in New England. And my wife, for our fiftieth wedding anniversary, took me to Scotland where her daddy was born.
They're big in England too.
They're all over the British Isles and for, I'm told, all over Europe. We are not used to them here. We have one that we've put, you know, on Sunshine.
I know exactly who you're talking about.
In Lehigh. And it's been open for not quite two years and we've had no serious accidents out there other than somebody ran right through the middle of it, you know, some drunk. So we're exploring these and we're trying to do things that are inexpensive, but Lehigh, golly, I can't believe that Sonny referred to that as a slum, his own home. We've done great things there, J D. It's on a rebound. There's people there that love their community and take care of it and I'm proud to represent those guys. And I'm proud, you guys look like you're about to pull a.
Well, we've actually got a caller online, Mr. Producer.
And then we'll cut you loose.
Okay.
Caller, you're on The Ledge Radio Show.
This has been great, thank you.
Go caller. Caller, are you there?
How are you guys doing this morning?
Good buddy, what you got for us?
Hey, I just got a quick question, well, just a couple comments real quick. I voted for Frank Mann last time and I think he's doing a good job. I don't necessarily agree with him on the casino, but I always hear, I've been listening the past couple of weeks and I keep hearing this Obama stuff, Obama stuff. But my question is to you is, what does Obama really have to do, when you're talking about local politics? What does the Republican and Democratic Party really have to do with local politics?
Well, it's a whole.
The majority of voters in Lee County are registered Republicans. So it's kind of a new point.
I don't.
But there are people and.
Well, here's the way I see it. Here's the way I see it. Obama, when you reference Obama, it's a whole ideology. You've got a liberal ideology that's a, you know, state-run, you know, utopian society, you know, they want, you know, the state to be in charge of everyone's lives, whereas on the Republican side, you know, we're for individual freedom, you know? We want the individual to have, you know, his or her own say in the community and, you know, we don't want the direction to come from above. Thanks caller.
Well, the stimulus package, who originally pushed that? Was it Obama or was that Bush?
Oh, that came from Bush, no. And I'll comment on that. Thanks caller. I'll comment on that for you right now.
Appreciate you tuning in. Check us on the web again.
Here's where the stimulus thing came from, you know, with George Bush, you know, we all thought he was a great Republican at the time, but come to find out after the fact, you know, I appreciate a lot of the things he did, but some folks will argue that he was further left than JFK. So, you know, we can't necessarily use him as a good example because the country was starting to lean left anyway and he just kind of fit in that little mold. So, you know, that's where that fits. Folks, we're gonna go to break here and we just want to thank Lee County Commissioner Frank Mann for coming into studio this morning on The Ledge Radio Show with J D and Smitty. Mr. Mann, we appreciate it, sir.
It's a joy being with you guys and I'm looking for the next trip back.
Frank, I wanted to go after you, but you made me like you, so I'm mad with you now.
Oh, Smitty, I'm so thrilled. Great being with you guys.
Be back in a minute.
J D, see ya.
It is the one time of the week where you can light a cigar, pour yourself a cocktail, prop your feet up on a comfortable ottoman and not be bothered by the enemies of pleasure who desire to take away your right to enjoy alpha male good life maneuvers.
Brought to you by the world famous cigar bar. Good times, great cigars at the world famous cigar bar.
It's The Cigar Dave Show, Saturday afternoon from two to four P.M. on ninety-six K-Rock.
Talk that rocks.
Securing your family, your business, your property. That's what's important in your world, no matter how big, no matter how small. Secure your world with Imperial Fire Alarm and Security today.
Imperial Fire Alarm and Security is a local company with hometown service, the way it should be. One call to Imperial will align you with the most effective fire alarm security and surveillance systems as well as state-of-the-art wireless monitoring. If you're a property manager or condo association member, ask about Imperial's wireless monitoring systems to replace costly and unreliable phone lines and save your community thousands from individual homes to large communities. Imperial Fire Alarm and Security can secure your world.
Don't you think it's time to secure your world? Imperial Fire Alarm and Security services Lee, Charlotte and Collier counties. Learn more at imperialfiresecurity.com or to schedule your free consultation, call two three nine two eight eight six four eight two. Secure your world at imperialfirescurity.com.
License number EF2000046.
When it comes to finding a reliable general contractor, you need to pick someone with a solid background and a good reputation. D Squared Construction gives you all that and more. They are family-owned and operated and stand behind every project. Quality workmanship and satisfaction to the customer has made them one of the premier contractors in Southwest Florida since 2004. Small residential renovations to large commercial projects, they do it all and they do it all well. Your projects are much too important to trust just anyone. D Squared Construction will come to your house or commercial project and give you a free onsite estimate. Call Kevin Dwyer at two three nine five six one four one zero eight. That's two three nine five six one four one zero eight for a free consultation and some good, sound advice. They won't waste your time or your money. D Squared Construction, when it needs to get done, right.
If you're a boat enthusiast, then you know just how much fun boating can be. Whether you're fishing in the Gulf or just taking in the beautiful sights that can only be seen from a boat, there's nothing quite like it. Boat owners also know that it takes time to maintain that boat. So when it comes to cleaning, detailing and restoration, Summer Jade is on board for you. Summer Jade specializes in full-service detailing. They also offer teak restoration, underwater hull cleaning and hull painting. It doesn't matter if you have a small boat or a large yacht, they do the job with quality results. Summer Jade is family-owned and operated, serving Lee County and the surrounding areas. And best of all, their rates can't be beat. Call today and ask for Eric. He has some great promotional rates, some as low as eleven dollars per foot.
I'm Eric Naylor, the owner of Summer Jade. Our rates are unbeatable. Call me at two three nine eight seven eight six nine four seven. That's eight seven eight six nine four seven. In Florida, it's summer every day.
And the boating is easy.
I love the smell of night hum in the morning.
And now, live, unedited, unrehearsed and unapologetic, brought to you by Imperial Fire Alarm and Security, securing your world. Straight off the ledge, it's J D and Smitty.
And you're on The Ledge Radio Show with J D and Smitty on ninety-six K-Rock. Phone numbers are two seven seven or seven seven five ninety-six hundred. Check out our live stream on the web at theledgeradishow.com. Hit us up on Facebook, facebook.com/thledgeradi show. And Smitty, I just wanted to bring something up real quick. ABC came out just a night or two ago with some photographs from the Trayvon Martin shooting. It was a photograph of George Zimmerman and it's the photograph that everyone was wanting to see. If you don't recall, as they're bringing him into the sheriff's station, into the lockup for questioning, you know, you didn't see any blood, any kind of, you know, any bruising or nothing like that. But the photo that you can check out on theblaze.com or even on Drudge Report, clearly the photo was taken about three minutes after the incident, had blood all over the back of his head, which, you know, could lend some credibility to the defense as far as when, you know, George was saying that, you know, he was getting his head bashed in on the concrete. And what do you think? I mean, shouldn't this photo have come out, you know, early on?
Yeah, you see a picture of a guy's back of his head with some blood on it, you know.
It's been vetted by ABC.
Right, and you know, when you get cut on your face or head, that bleeds the most. It's fact. And, you know, I don't know if that's going to be the save-all for anybody.
I think it lends some credibility if nothing else.
Well, it shows that there was some kind of struggle, that there was something going on, but I don't think he hit him with a bag of Skittles in his head and made him bleed.
No, no, they said he smashed his head into the curb.
That's what he said.
Well, I think we got, it looks fairly credible, but my point is, I think this photo should have come out early on because it didn't come out early on because you got the racebaiters like NBC that, you know, wanted it to be a black and white issue. That didn't fit the agenda, you know?
I'll tell you what, I don't see it as a black and white issue. I see it as a gun law issue. I think they're turning this around, using it as a poster child to say, look at the gun law. Now, Rick Scott, which we've asked to come on here and he said he would maybe call in.
Sure.
He hasn't yet, but now they have a committee looking into the laws now and reviewing it and I think this is just another way to get this law shut down so people can take their guns away. That's what I see.
You're talking about the stand-your-ground law. You're talking about the stand-your-ground law.
Yeah, I don't think that this is a, you know, yes, it's an issue that the boy got killed, absolutely, but if the boy was, you know, white, you know, whatever, he's just a kid walking the street, you know, being a kid, getting into all kinds of mischief. God knows, when I was a kid, I got into all kinds of mischief. This guy went up to him or some kind of altercation occurred and, you know, obviously the boy was shot. So, you know, whatever happened in that transpired in that moment, nobody really, really, really knows.
Absolutely.
And I think that they're just using this to try to just slowly push this law off the table and say, well, we can't have anybody with guns. I think it goes a lot deeper than just this.
Well, and that's what Mike Scott said last week, you know? He said, you know, when you have gun laws, the only folks that won't have guns are the law-abiding citizens. So, you know, but again, my point was just that, why do they wait till, you know, 50-something days after the incident to show the photograph that, you know, exonerates Zimmerman's story at least?
Wasn't it the HIPAA law had something to do with it?
No, there was something to do with HIPAA. I mean, HIPAA is a very strict law for any kind of medical issues with anyone, protecting the medical records of folks and I know that they weren't able to interview the paramedics right away because of HIPAA. They have to do that through subpoena. So, I know all that's going to come out, but I just thought this was interesting and I wish it would have come out earlier. It might have put some of the other stories to rest, some of the, you know, conclusions that people came up with just through the media.
Sure, yeah. Not to jump ship on that, but I know you're a very, very big right-wing type of guy.
That's me.
That's you. And I was reading and I know we had Mr. Trey Radell on the show and he was very, very generous with us and helped us out, actually, was on our first show. But I was reading yesterday that Mr. Radell apparently went ahead and started to get these websites up and using the other guy's names, so pretty much he started a number of websites using the name of Gary O'Sheban, Chauncey Goss and Paige Kriegel. And I guess it's, and I didn't see it, but I guess it's Paige Kriegel at whatever, gmail.com or whatever. He started a webpage using their own names.
Sure.
And even the guy from Gary Lee, who's the chairman of the Lee County Republican Party said, and I quoted here, personally, I find it reprehensible that a candidate would resort to these kind of tactics. And, you know, that is a little bit, and I like Trey and I wish Trey wouldn't have done it because I don't think he needs to play dirty like this.
Well, he's not playing dirty. You know, these guys should have had their webpage already bought and paid for. You're talking about a $15 GoDaddy account, you know?
That's a sneaky backdoor tactic that is un...
All you got to do is look at the webpage and it'll tell you facts about that candidate. That's all it's doing. If there's any lies or distortions, you can rebut it, but what he did is he went out and he purchased...
It's dirty.
His campaign purchased the website.
We know what he purchased, it's not right. You don't do politics like that. It's a backdoor, low-ball way to win and it's bush league and he should never have done it.
You think that's bad?
Even Kriegel, a four-time member of the Florida House, he liked Radell's move, he said that's like the Russian mobs identifying their ring.
I'm going to stab you with these scissors.
And that's exactly what he said. So, I mean, you got your guys playing super hardball dirty and it shouldn't have been going on like that. If you're going to be in politics, give it to a straight. The average guy on the field, in the street, the blue-collar guy, he never gets a straight deal and that's another backdoor crap thing that's going on.
Are you saying that Chauncey Goss is the regular blue-collar guy? Are you saying Chauncey Goss is the regular blue-collar guy?
I'm talking about the guys that listen to this stuff that have to vote. The guys in the field, they don't know. They go to a website and it says Gary O'Sheban or Chauncey Goss or Paige Kriegel. They don't know it's been picked up by Trey Radell. It's a dirty, backdoor way to do business.
I guess that's lack of planning on their part.
Yeah, lack of planning or just sneakiness.
Smitty, we got a caller on the line. Caller, you're on the Ledge Radio Show.
We got a caller on the line, caller, we got a one...
Turn down your radio, caller. Can you hear us?
Turn down your radio, caller. Can you hear us?
Nah, get rid of him.
Damn, you just shut him down.
You can't figure out how to use your phone.
Call back and turn your radio off.
Well, like I was saying, you know, that to me is not an issue because he didn't post anything negative on the websites. He bought the websites and he just listed their record. That's what he did, he listed their record, their voting record.
O'Sheban said he was surprised by his development. He says, this is reminiscent of the Washington-style smear tactic. It's not something I would have expected to see from Republican primary and...